You have your recorder, Joanne?
There you go.
You got your recorder?
Meeting is open and we are being recorded twice. Okay, um, all right, so first we have meeting minutes from October twenty first. I motion to approve meeting minutes of October twenty first, twenty twenty four.
Second, second.
On paper.
All right.
I got a red pen like.
Your teacher, you're supposed to have red pen.
I know. No, you're there actually like you're not allowed to use them that's like.
You stole my red pen.
Sorry, whatever. Um, all right, any audience participation? All right, um, so we have nothing from Rainy.
Rainy's here.
He is here.
Yeah.
Hi Rainy. All right, go ahead Christina, what do you got for us?
Um, let's see, okay, so. Kelly, our new accounting person, she, I have a meeting set with her Eric. And Sarah for Thursday.
Great.
So we're gonna go over her transition. Again, Eric's gonna stay on till the end of January. I sent them over the certified minutes from the special town meeting. So that should be all set. He wanted, Eric wanted Kelly involved in that whole process of the stuff with the special town meeting, so that was good. Um, we did sign the contract extension for the MRF, which is that's where we take our recycling.
Right.
So that was good. We signed the RDP contract and the swap shop grant paperwork and we've sent that all to DEP. Um, I don't know if you remember a while ago, Pudding Hills post-community agreement needed to be updated, so I did reach out to our attorneys. They wrote a new host community agreement that would fall in line with the CCC's regulations, but also protect the town. I know that Pudding Hill is a smaller operation, but it's something that we can use in the future. It's just like a generalized thing. I had submitted it to the CCC, but they kicked it back to us and said, you need to make changes. So I've sent that to the attorneys again to say what needs to be done as far as that goes. Um, the animal inspector has started doing inspections. She borrowed the truck a couple of times, so that's going forward. That's good.
No, she did.
Oh, she did? She's okay. She's gonna pick it up again on Friday.
And he's got someone else doing her barn, you said?
Yeah, there's something that you need to sign for that though. I don't know where it is though. I'm not sure if it's in there.
I don't think I saw it here. We got meeting minutes and several warrants.
So, we can look at it though, it's, um, it's just so that she's allowed to do the inspection.
I think I saw that email.
Yeah.
Was it a digital sign thing?
Uh, you can, I think. Um, but either way, I can get it to you, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
Um, I signed up for the Office of Inspector General class for the public contracting for the municipal procurement officer training. So that's, you have to take three classes. This is the first one, so this one's in February. Um. Oh, there's been an issue with checks not being deposited. That departments are collecting from residents.
That's exactly what I said.
Not again, not again.
There was something like in the area of around sixty checks were recently taken into the treasurer or some dating back to August. Um, there have been several phone calls from residents upset that their checks haven't been cashed. So, um, I believe, you know, there's, it should be no more than two weeks.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So.
That's what the treasurer says as well, as well. Preferably one week, but two weeks at the very most.
So we should probably send something out to.
Departments.
Departments.
Yeah.
Who receive checks to let them know that it's, um, the two week max.
Tell them one week.
One week, two week max.
The law is one week.
Okay.
Sarah said, at least do it in two weeks.
Oh.
All right, I can send just an email from.
Perfect.
To any department that receives checks. Um. I think it's. Oh, there's a question. I did talk to Rainy about this. I don't, I don't personally haven't seen anything about it, but when the snow, when the truck accident happened with the snowplow last January, this most recent January. We did get paid for the repairs to the truck. The insurance company, Progressive, is asking if the town intends to present any demands for loss of use or out-of-pocket expenses. I don't have any documentation saying that we were seeking any of that. I didn't know if that's, Rainy doesn't know anything about it. I didn't know if the board was aware that we intended to.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay, I'll just reply to that email then.
Okay, thank you.
And then we were.
And I've mentioned too that that bill from Noble Hospital, it was turned over to Pro Medical or something like that because it was being treated as a worker's complaint and it is not a worker's complaint. So that's all part of that too, and I've been trying to work with Noel. You know, to get a copy of the bill, which is a lot of fun.
So that's supposed to come out of our insurance then?
I haven't got that far.
Okay. I thought they were supposed to send it to Matt. Did they not send the bill to Matt?
I can ask it. I don't think so because I told him I was looking for it and he hasn't offered it, but all.
They're gonna stop it tomorrow. No, 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 but we needed a copy of it and I thought they.
I'll keep working on that.
We got a notification from the state that they are looking for, um, property to build a new Springfield Regional Justice Center for Massachusetts Trail Courts. I think that they're just sending it to everyone.
Everyone, yeah.
They're not gonna put it up here, but.
Yeah, they got lots of land they can have.
Half involved.
No, 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 purchase. And pay passes on.
Shout out to Jimmy Markle.
I gotta imagine if people were like, oh, I gotta drive out to Blantyre to get a floor.
And then we tripped in an exit.
There you go.
And I think for me, that's it.
Okay, um, I, what was your hire date Christina? How many months?
July eighth. It's my first day.
Okay, so we, um, Joanne, can you help us, um, we need to do a six-month review for Christina so that, because she's eligible for that raise. We just need the review, you know, the packets that we do. I don't know where they are. I think you have them.
We do. We have them saved on the computer.
Um, so if we can just get copies of those and we can put it on the agenda for like maybe two weeks out so that we can just fill them out and then we'll do it. We have to do it at the opening.
Hey, did you have a question for me?
Um, no word on the highway superintendent position?
We just got two more applications today. It's still posted. I think we're just gonna wait and see until everything rolls in.
Thank you.
Um, and nothing else for the other open highway position, huh?
There, there was one and I gave it to Rainy and he did reach out to the person because they seemed like a viable candidate and when I spoke to him today, he said, he hasn't heard back yet, but I'll give another call.
Okay, good. All right, we don't have board to help. You know, Jennifer. All right, Gordon, come on down. I found that form Christina and I just tried to print it, so we'll see the prints for Inspector Van.
So I'm here about what's going on with us with our skater project, the loan we have going through, what we've been trying to get taken care of. We were here about eighteen months ago. We all sat down, remember the room, sat down. Back then it was Chris Dunn. It was you, you guys, it was the water board, Papa Metrio and everyone was here. Um, we went through the whole thing and that was the start of the project. We had checked with Chris, we were good to go, so we started our project. Since then, we've gone through four other administrators until we got Christina. Um, a lot of the stuff that was supposed to get done, didn't get done in a timely manner. It bumped us out. It pushed us, it pushed us out. We didn't get stuff that, um. The treasurer was supposed to take care of, the accountant was supposed to take care of in a timely manner. Um, stuff that should have been pushed down from, and Christina's helped out a lot with us getting it going because, like I said, because we need, you know, it's part of the whole thing is we need them to work with us to do this. You know, with the rotation through it, just, it all got kicked in the curb and forgot. I mean, and I think a lot of, a lot of the towns had that problem over the last several months. So where we are now is, we're to the point where our green light letter just got submitted about three weeks ago. Um. Karen also didn't come in today and I, I ended up stepping in and taking over and doing, um. A lot of the stuff and I actually got the answers I needed and we got Christina and I got assigned and I got all of our reimbursements submitted. Well, up to number five anyways, submitted in today. Problem is, we ain't been noting the DMDEP for the last week and a half, so I keep getting, you know, kickback messages from them guys. So where we are now is, um, we're hoping this is gonna be in in the next month or so, but, um, we don't have the funding and basically the vendors want their money. They're ninety days out. We talked with Sarah and she said they could, the town can do something. It's, what does, what does she call that?
She calls it an internal borrowing.
Yeah. Um, because they know we have the money. It's like a temporary, temporary payment and when the money comes in, it goes back and pays that back off instead. Because right now, um, when bills six and seven come in, we will be. In, in the, in the, in debt up to five hundred ninety-nine thousand, one eighty-three. Is what they want. We have already over the last year and a half put over a hundred twenty thousand of our budget and we've also paid out an additional, um. Roughly seventy thousand dollars out of our funding for this project. This all gets reimbursed and back to us when the loan comes through. As of right now, the well is dry. They want their money and looking to stop paying. I don't blame, I don't blame.
Well, what's the contract saying, Gordon, for payment terms?
Yeah, we're supposed to pay them.
No, no, I, I know you're supposed to pay them. Was it like, so much done and you pay eight, thirty, then seventy and?
It's like when the bills, that's what they are.
Okay, I'm just asking.
That's why we're up to five and six and seven are coming. We've only paid one and two. And we've got the money.
The bottom line is, how much do you owe?
When seven comes in, five hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars.
So why did we start with the services?
Because Chris told us we were good to go. We had the green light to go.
But we didn't have the money.
We had the grant. We had, I mean, we had, we were approved by DEP to.
But we didn't actually have the money in our.
No, we didn't, but like I said, and we've never done this before, we're relying on him being that key. You know, we took it that he, you know, being that he was in that position, he knew what he was doing and, you know, like I said, we, we, we got everything we were doing. We were working with our engineer. Things were going forward and then all of a sudden he's gone. And then we had, like I said, then we had Iran temporarily and I was, it was just, you know, he was just keeping things going and then Mike came, that was just, that was a waste. Problem is, Chris really didn't have the authority. He should have come before the board. It did come before the board.
But if he said go.
Yeah. We all sat down and we all sat down here as a group with the engineering firm and everything.
Who signed the contract? I never saw one.
I signed a contract for you guys.
Your name is on it.
The work.
Yep.
And that's all I need to know.
Yeah.
And so we were gonna come up with six hundred thousand dollars.
Is there a provision in that con, do you have a contract?
I don't have it. These are the bills. I don't have the contract.
Because usually our contracts will say that these contract terms are contingent upon us having the funding. So they would sort of just kind of have to wait it out. I mean, they know, I understand the position that they're in, but. We are getting the funding. We don't have, I mean, we don't have it. It would be a borrowing. Sarah would have to speak more educated about this. I'm not a hundred percent sure. But we would have to take like an actual bar and it's not money that the town necessarily has or have.
So the, the thing is theoretically too, now that everything's all said and done and, and Lord and.
Lock and Lord.
Lock and Lord. They, yeah, I mean.
They're the bonding council, did the green light letter.
So they've had that now, I talked with Sarah, they've had that now about three weeks. So they should be good. Once they have that and the state gets it, the money should be released. I mean, because it's, it's there, we've done everything. We, I mean, we've been backing, I mean, one last little piece that was like a stickler, I mean, I, I brought my wife and she looked over the thing and basically she figured it out, made a couple of phone calls, boom, we got it cleared up. So, I mean, everything is in there, everything's sitting. At this particular point, I can't do anything else. I mean.
So what does that mean for the project? Like, is there?
Elm is still running and, and running. Elm is still going right now and doing what they're doing. I mean, pulling wires and they probably got another couple of weeks.
Elm Electric?
Elm, yeah.
Yeah, can they call me back?
Yeah.
Oh, it's like a spaceship. It's, it's crazy.
So what is overdue amount? Is this five ninety-nine?
Ode as of right now, where, where, what I have right in front of me, I have, that is three hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two.
That's what's owed now?
That's what I had. That's current. That's current. That's bills three, four and five. We've paid one and two.
I mean, it sounds like we're gonna have to put a pause on the work.
Yeah, so.
What will happen if we do pause until we get the payments? Is that like?
It'll just stop. It'll just stop.
Nothing's gonna like fall apart? I just don't know.
No, 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 no. We, we, we've got the new, the, the valves and the meters are in, they're, they're, nothing's leaking or going, nothing's gonna go to hell. We're just gonna continue to run it manual. Um.
So I think that means definitely, first of all, is that we need to pause anyway. Um, it's just, it seems, it feels like a pretty scary spot to be in.
Yeah, yeah. So, well, the thing is, the work that's being done right now has already been kind of, it's, they've already, it's already been purchased and done. You know what I mean?
The materials and all.
Yeah, they're just finishing up this thing. What's gonna happen is like, so when it comes time to the chemical room, they're not gonna start the chemical.
Yeah, right.
So, um. But, and like, like I said, we got the valving and everything else, so that's, that's the big stickler. It's just.
I don't know honestly what the process would be to do this borrowing. It may take us about the amount of time that.
That's what I'm thinking, but I'm, I'm letting you guys know. I'm, I'm honestly, I'm thinking if, if it goes the way it goes and you guys did what you gotta did, did what you gotta do. They might actually, I think they're probably gonna hit at the same time.
I think so too.
Um, but like I said, let, let you guys know, you know, what we're doing with that because it's like, you know, and like I said, Christina's been helping a lot and, you know, Sarah's finally got on board and, I mean, that's just, other one over here, forget it. I forgot what they're called.
Yeah, we, we're just switching over to a new.
That's it.
Did he get back to you today?
No, no, that's another thing, a rate study. I've only been waiting since September to get an answer. Um. So, yeah, it's, and that's the thing too, is getting, you know, getting, getting all the information back and it's squared up, getting everything from everybody. It's, it's, it's insane. And like I, I said, a lot of it didn't get really rolling until probably July, August. I mean, when we sat down with, with, um, Greg Devine and the whole thing. So, um, and like I said, Chris should have, there was a lot that he should have jumped in to help us out with because, you know, he should have been there, like stuff that she's been doing. You know, that's, that was the role and he kind of just, you know, and we're, we're, it is what it is. Exactly, exactly. Clean it up as quick, as quickly as we can.
I think going forward, you know, we just have to make sure that we're learning from these situations, just like, you know, hopefully learning from the truck situation with the, the last grant.
Um, yeah, don't join Chester, that's, that's.
No, we can't spend the money before we have it, I think is the lesson we learn.
We're not supposed to, we're supposed to have it. The accountant should have it.
Correct.
Again, that was like, that was again with the communication with, with them and with us right here and, you know, we really gotta kind of. When we put stuff out and we need an answer, I don't need it in two months. You know, because, you know, like I said, this was basically a summer program and it's, it's a third of my time is gone, so like really, you know, they gotta kind of click on it and stuff like that.
Get back to the numbers. So it's six hundred thousand or three hundred thousand that you need?
When bills six and seven come through, which the.
Well, when is that supposed to come through?
It's November and December's bill.
So they already came through?
It's, it's just the engineering firm hasn't processed it. What I have in my hand is three hundred eighty-two thousand. When the engineering firm processes bills six and seven, it'll be five ninety-nine.
Okay, so.
One eighty-three.
At one eighty-three.
Close enough to six hundred.
Just call it six hundred.
Yeah, so, so. When that bill comes in, you've got ninety days to pay.
We're already, we're already over, yeah, we're already over ninety days on, on some.
On the three hundred.
On the three hundred.
Well, you're right now, correct, you said it.
Um, there's, there's one, the one is where that one's paid, that one's.
So what's gonna happen is, as a municipality, we can't accrue interest.
Yeah.
They will stop work, which is fine.
Correct, and he already, we already, we already, we already said that, we already said that. But they're a great firm to work with, a great contractor, they're very good, very, very good.
I mean, personally, I think it makes more sense to wait for the loan than to start a process of trying to do some sort of.
Well, right now, you really can't. Honestly, it's weak a shot because nobody's around, nobody answers, nobody's saying anything. So, I mean, it wouldn't be until like January, what's the first, fifth, something like that, sixth, seventh, I don't know.
The third is Friday, this Friday.
Hopefully we can hear something back from them by then, um, and we'll have a good idea, so.
The email, I'm sorry, not to get off topic, but the email today, that doesn't have anything to do with this project, right?
Which, which email I sent like nine.
The, the one that you had forwarded to Eric again and said, hey, we.
Is, that is the rate study, which.
So that's different.
That's a different one. Six. So we got the rate study that, that we've been waiting forever for to get that finalized, so we can basically meter. Um. You know, and then again, that got to the point because back in old four, when, when you guys get the USDA loan and you did everything, part of the stipulation for that loan was you were going to meter. The water. Well, previous people just kicked it down the road. I'm, I'm not gonna say who. But it, it came to roost and it, it, it became a consent order, so we have to do the rate. It's, it's ten grand for the rate study. So we're in the process of doing, and that's only for five years. I wanna do twenty years, but I couldn't afford all that, so I ended up doing a small.
Excuse me?
Rainy, we can hear you, Rainy.
Sorry. I was looking at something else, sorry.
No worries.
So, we, we have that rate study, that's, that's in process too, we have to, we have to finish up. Um, then we have the, the, uh, the consent order with the ozone. Luckily, we're looking into possibly getting, um, funding for that, so that won't cost us anything. That's three hundred fifty grand. New service line is three hundred and seventy-five thousand. We're looking at a grant for that. We got.
Please don't start any of that work until we have the money.
The grants, the grants, they award us and give us that. So, well, we already got the three hundred fifty thousand for the pump house in the.
I thought that was for the storage tank or something.
Storage tank pump house. It's all one combo.
So you got the email from Christina about grants going forward and how we're handling them?
I haven't sent it yet. We're doing that when we do the.
So, just, I don't know if you want, want to explain with grants.
Oh, so, uh, moving forward, the grant stuff, we are gonna have, everybody's gonna have just a form that they have to fill out that says who, uh, you're getting, like, who the granting agency is, what kind of grant it is, what you're gonna do with the grant money. And who's in charge of the grant. So anytime you apply for a grant, each department will have, will have that information on record so that we're not looking. It's just because I ran into so many grants out there.
Yeah, yeah.
And I didn't know who even the granting agency was or what we were doing with it, so just moving forward, just for better bookkeeping and so that everybody's on the same page. It wasn't specific to.
But we're looking at seven hundred if you hopefully EPA, if that goes through. That's a last minute thing that EEP called us to help us out with. We got the three hundred fifty thousand for the engineering and some infrastructure work over by the Plaza. I've been in contact with this, with this DOT. That's easier said than done because there's three different departments of DOT, depending on if you're outside the fence, inside the fence or in the building. Um, the, uh, the CR didn't, I don't think the CR got passed with the federal government, but I. Once it passes, if it passes, we're getting one point one oh five million to replace Russell Stage in Maple Lane, Watermane.
And that's a grant.
That's a, that's federal earmark funding, yeah, it's, gets a grant. So that would replace this.
Not to change the subject, but I wanna change it a little. Now, all the curb boxes on Route twenty-three for all those houses, they're paved over, correct?
So, going west, they're in the yards, going east, some are in, on the edge of the road, but a lot of them are, are paved over, yeah.
So can't we get some?
We gotta, I, that's, that's.
DOT picked us up and made me.
Yeah.
Because if my house breaks, you know, you were over at my house, it's out in the road somewhere.
We don't even know where yours is.
Exactly.
We, we've, well, we, we're working with Western, uh, Mountain Water, so basically, the GPS is about ninety, ninety-five percent of the town. Um, yours, yours is one, yours in the town, the old town halls, like they're ones we just.
Church, churches across the street, they're, they're.
That's right by the sidewalk. We've, I, we kind of know that. It's buried. Fire station is buried. Fire station is not, and the thing is too, that's the other thing too, is if we replace, if we replace Main Street. Half these people don't have the right kind of water supply line coming in and it's held on with hose clamps. If we increase that and the pressure increases to where it is, you're, they're gonna blow their water lines right off their house. They're gonna flood their basements. So.
I didn't mean to make it larger, but.
Yeah, yours is the black plastic, sorry, but it's the wrong one.
So, um.
The other house, no, mirror, no.
So you'll get an email from Christina with information what to do for each of those grants.
That's easy to do. I mean, we've been working with Wright and Pierce, um, and they've been great because they have, um, a department that helps us find all these grants to work with them like that. Um, and they actually have a grant guy, basically the whole idea is they work with you and then hope they can get the, the work from it. So, um, yeah, she wants to sit down with you, Hogan.
Oak Hogan? Don't you just say?
No, Hogan, his last name, Hogan.
You sure? Your eyes light up?
Yeah. That is like a big Christmas present.
So, the, the, the thing is. There's six hundred thousand.
Yeah.
We're just gonna have to wait for it.
So we're paying forward for six and seven.
The work for six and seven is done, you're saying?
Works for six and seven is done. The engineering firm hasn't processed the bill.
We're just waiting on that.
It's sitting in his email box because the, the contractor also asked me about it.
And, and how long before the reimbursement comes?
Doesn't know.
Well, I mean, you're asking the town to put their neck out and.
Well, she said once, the thing is.
Taking, if we're taking money from one to help the water department. And we have.
Trying to get it cut off.
Thanks for listening. I, I'm, I'm, I'm serious here. We take money out of free cash or whatever to pay this bill and then something happens. All right, now we have to go out and borrow money. So I think it's important that we know when this money is gonna get paid, if it's gonna get paid.
It's, it's gonna get paid.
When?
If I had that, I wouldn't be here asking for money.
About a month.
Yeah, hopefully a month or so, but the thing is, if it takes that long for you guys to process, then it's a moot point.
But we don't have enough free cash to do this anyways.
No, why don't we do this?
Sarah knows more about it than we do anyway, so we're kind of only giving you a half of what we know.
Can we touch base? You don't have to come necessarily next week, but can we just have an update next week as to?
I can let her know.
If we've received any money, if you've been able to speak with someone and gotten a date, um, and then we'll have a better idea of a timeline.
And where this money is coming from.
We know where it's coming. It's coming from the loan.
His own loan.
Yeah, yeah.
The water department.
The water department won't. They're just waiting for it to be processed. They've got part of it processed.
But we're from, we're.
No.
We're gonna wait and see. We're gonna wait and see. That's what we're gonna do right now.
Because we were saying that.
We're not gonna do anything.
It's gonna take a month of time.
It would bankrupt us.
And yeah.
I know. So we, like I said, on that, on that money too, um, when we got this, they, they, instead of doing one of the rounds of ARPA funding, what they did is they went to everybody that got a loan. And they divided it up, however they do it, and we ended up getting four fifty back, four fifty or three fifty? I forgot, three fifty or four fifty. So what it is, it's like loan forgiveness. So even though it's like a one point one million loan, they're gonna be taking three or four hundred plus thousand dollars off the loan, so. Yeah, the principal, so it won't be as much, so, you know, which I hope it's the four fifty, I don't remember.
I think it is four fifty.
Yeah.
So there was, there's a loan that they applied for. It's over a million dollars. They started the project. They're trying to get the documents in order so that they can start getting payments from that loan. We're hoping that all the documents are in order and the payment reimbursements will start so that he can pay those bills. So, but for now, we're gonna put a pin in it with the work moving forward, until we start getting that money in.
Yeah.
Yep.
So Elm's gonna probably just finish up and then hopefully it comes in.
Can you seriously, if you want to talk to Elm's, we, please get them to return Christina's calls. We've been trying to.
Who you calling?
Um.
Matt?
Benjamin Haynes?
For what? Project manager, for what do you wanna do?
Oh, for this building. We have the generator switch that needs to be installed.
She's coming up briefly.
Do you know a Pete Wozniak? Do you know a Pete Wozniak? No. Okay, that was helpful. Thank you.
I'll just call, I'll just call Matt tomorrow and have him give you, I'm gonna give you a call. Cause he does, he does all the, all the pump house and the um, everything we do.
He's a local.
Switcher relay was engineered by somebody else. It was so like.
Well, like I said, he's the guy that we usually use for everything here. Like I said, it's the the local contact we use, so you know, I mean, if he doesn't know, then he can. And um, and you guys, you know, small salt marsh up there too. He works, he works down there.
Okay.
And um. He might be able to do something there too.
Alright.
So we'll just wait to hear from you.
Yes, that's the gist of it.
And then just make sure you relate to any of the contractors that we're gonna, we're gonna pause on work.
Well, I talked to Bob and technically I'm supposed to go to Jim because of the whole thing, but I've been talking to Bob because Jim is like out of commission right now, so.
And he's from Bay State? Or no?
Bob is, Bob Watson is Bay State.
A regional contractor.
Yeah, so we just talked to Bob and then Bob relates to him, cause we're not, we're, you know.
That's fine, as long as they know that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We, the town is.
We already talked to him this afternoon, so he's kind of, he's kind of aware of what's going on, so.
If if you pause the project and then the money comes in and everything, how how long does it take to restart to finish?
Everything's pretty much all there.
Now.
Um, the chem, chem, the chem system we're using, we're not. Doing like they did last time where it's custom built. We're getting like. Uh.
A B C.
Yeah, skid systems, you know what I mean? Yeah, wow, I like that. Let's buy that one. The work, yeah, great. It's cheaper too, yeah, okay, cause it's all prefab pre-made. They bring it, it's, they bring it in actually already made and just.
You just hitch it together to.
Yeah, hitch it together, mounted to the wall, turn it on and go. So I mean, we, and a lot of the stuff, we've. We've prepped the rooms. We 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 basically um had all the floors all done on our our budgets. We had everything cleaned up. We got it all ready. We moved everything out. Um, so. We saved a little bit of money and time on that and it's just ready to go. So. Yeah.
Alright, well, just let us know next week where we're at.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, that's like six. Are you, you guys having a meeting on the sixth? So. That's it.
Alright.
Yeah.
When that. Long pipe hook up to our house and probably to everybody else, we put in, we didn't pay for that. The water department did that. And they did it because they had to change where the water came into the house from the driveway side to the far side. So.
Well, they do.
Gonna be replaced by you or am I gonna have to do it?
I have no idea. That's, that your road's a long way down the road. I mean, Russell's, Russell stages is a four inch rotten line. Um, this will be done first. So we also had the L C R R to lead and, you know, the lead and copper line inventory, which we just. That was a whole nother thing. It took us a couple of years and. And wait, what's what is your, you know, asking for pictures and going every these houses, all that stuff. So that got done. We're hoping that they're gonna have some funding come available for that, um. Because what we wanna do is, um, a lot of these houses that have. Older water lines, we wanna kind of try to get some extra funding to. Pay to have like those replaced out at the same time. Um, and for some people who have like older rotten lines, we can't do the whole thing, at least. Do half of it and hopefully, you know, it it cut the cost down for other people.
So I don't have to worry about this.
We don't have, no, you're 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 a little down the road.
Okay.
I mean, uh, there's a fire down here in Lower Russell's. How many times is that broken? Come on, we all know. A week, a year, yeah, once a year or the last eighteen years. So.
Alright, thank you, Gordon.
Alright. Talk to you later. I'll let you know next week. I'll let her know.
Okay, I'm sure I'll talk to you.
Yep.
Alright, um, I just had a question on warrant number thirteen. Is that the retro pay in there for highway?
No.
Cause it says got, it's got like nine thousand dollars in there for highway pay?
They worked overtime, I think. Didn't they?
Okay.
I think.
It seems like a big chunk. Nine thousand five hundred and sixty-two. I thought it would have been, cause nor- like a normal pay period. We've got.
Did it smell?
It, I mean, there was some stuff. Wages high, oh, never mind. Wages highways nine thousand. Okay, I guess that's normal. Nevermind.
It's normal to the extent that there was a couple of conditions that the crews had to be called out and it was overtime and plus holiday.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so motion to approve um warrants. Uh, fourteen payroll, fourteen um select board accounts and thirteen. Uh, payable, that's for approval. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? On favor?
Alright.
Hi. Alright, um, and then we have the. Right, you sign, wait, you sign this one already. He needs to sign that one. Um, we have the. Contract.
Yeah.
With the the union contract.
Yep.
Um, so. Everyone. Is on the same page, finally there. So motion to approve the union, um. United Public Services Employees Union Local four twenty-four M contract.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Alright.
Hi. Um, my only question was, it talks about the um, the goal being established. And it says by highway super and by um, the select board. So. When are those goals? Oh, do we want Rainy working on the schools? Are we gonna wait for a new highway?
I think Rainy should and so we're giving.
Make up some kind of a chart.
Yeah.
We can follow it and then we can pass it on.
They already have them.
They have their individual goals. Rainy, you have individual goals for all the guys?
Uh, well, yeah, actually, uh.
Okay.
We've been expanding upon it. Within the last two weeks, quite a bit.
Okay. Alright, and then so you're, so in the contract, it says that you are, um, or the superintendent is evaluating them quarterly. And then that will be um going to their merit-based pay.
Uh, correct, but I'm also, I was gonna talk to Christina. I have not talked to her yet. Um, but I do wanna revamp that. Um. The. The, oh my god. Can't think of the proper words, but anyways, the paperwork that's supposedly. Reviewing them is not really that good. For the town of Blanford.
You mean you want like a new form? I haven't seen it. We can, I can.
It's it's so, it's so generic. It really doesn't apply to all the circumstances that's due. In the highway department, especially being that you have volunteer fire people. Um, and there's, there's a number of things that I think are supposed to be a little bit more specialized for the town of Blanford.
Yeah, we can do that. That's not a problem.
Yeah, I I, and again, I I I just started reviewing it and I wanted to bring it to Christine to make some suggestions.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, new business, we have a fur cog collective highway bid.
Yeah, this just came in. I, you guys don't have to sign it. I wanted to give it to you so you have a week to look it over. I don't know what it normally looks like for you guys. So I wanted you to see it. We have until January seventeenth to sign it and submit it. Uh, Rainy has it too.
Okay.
Um, so if you guys just wanna take the week and you can talk about it next Monday.